...forum for the April 1st election tonight. Candidates for the Wisconsin Rapid School Board will be featured in this part of the program. My name is Gloria Kubiszak. I represent the League of Women Voters and I will be your moderator. We are very pleased to bring you this live broadcast on River Cities Community Access as well as a simulcast on WFHR radio. The League thanks the candidates for their willingness to run for office, and I would remind you that the League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization and does not support or endorse any political party or any political candidate. The candidates for our Wisconsin Rapid School Board are Sandra Hett, John Krings, and Jim Scott. Earlier this evening, they drew for speaking order, and each candidate will have two minutes for opening remarks, two minutes for closing remarks, and two minutes to answer all the questions. Written questions from our audience will be -- we ask that the written questions from our audience be directed to the office and not any particular candidate. Viewers and those who are listening on the radio can call in their questions at 421-8248. That telephone number is at the bottom of your screen. We will begin with John Krings tonight for opening statements.
Thank you, Gloria. I'd like to start by thanking the League of Women Voters for hosting tonight's candidate forum. I appreciate the opportunity to express my views about the upcoming Board of Education election on April 1st. I'm a lifelong Central Wisconsin resident. I graduated from John Edwards High School and attended Midstate Tech. I am a longtime employee of New Page Papers Beer &amp; Mill and elected official of the United Steelworkers Local 294. My wife Julie and I are the very proud parents of three children. Our two sons are graduates of LEHS and our daughter is in grade school. For the past seven years, I have been a member of the WRPS Board of Education. I currently serve as Board President. I believe that we have an outstanding school system here in Wisconsin Rapids, and I pledge to do everything that I can to maintain that excellence.
Thank you, John Krings. Opening statements, Jim Scott.
Good evening, viewers. First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for inviting me to speak tonight and for holding a forum. I'm here as a choice to the taxpayers and voters and citizens of the Wisconsin Rapids Public School System. My background is outside the academic area. My background is primarily that of an entrepreneur. I was a businessman for over 31 years, ran a business from the start, and helped it grow, was an employer, understand employee relations, understand how it has to be to succeed, how it is to compete, what it takes for people to motivate themselves and be better. I'm here also as a choice to give voters an alternative to the status quo, to the traditional public school system as we know it, and I'll probably get into that in more depth as the evening progresses. But again, I want to thank the League for having me here, and I look forward to the questions from the viewers.
Thank you, Jim Scott. Sandra Hett.
Hi. I also want to thank the League and thanks to people that stuck for the third session of these forums. I'm originally from Winona, Minnesota. I got my BA at Cornell College in Mount Vernon, Iowa. I taught Spanish in Mount Vernon, Iowa. I taught Spanish here in Wisconsin Rapids for a couple of years, and also at PDA Jacobs in Stevens Point. And for a while, I was involved owning a real estate office here in Wisconsin Rapids. I have two daughters that are graduates of Lincoln High School. They've done very well. They went on and got their four-year degrees from various institutions, and I think we have a wonderful public school system. And I want to continue to stand up for public education because public education is taking one heck of a hit lately. I strongly believe in public education. I've been on the board through the good times, when at the end of the year, we had X number of dollars left in the budget to decide what we're going to do with it, and I've been here when the times were not quite so good. I think I have a great deal of expertise in some areas. I've gone to a lot of seminars, kept up abreast of what's going on nationally and in state when it comes to educational concerns, and I'd like to continue serving the people in the Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools.
Thank you, Sandra Hett. We will begin with our first question, and it goes to you first, Jim Scott. The question is, what is your opinion of the voucher system?
I am a strong proponent of parental choice. The voucher system in Wisconsin, Wisconsin was one of the pioneers, if not the pioneer, in vouchers. But the voucher system as we see it right now needs areas of improvement. It's problematic. Again, I am a strong proponent of parental choice. However, the current voucher system as it is conceived and implemented right now picks winners and losers rather than being universal. And as a result, you have a situation where you have appearances that money is being siphoned off from the public school system. My concept is that parental choice should be universal. Everybody should have the ability to choose how and where their child is educated. And as a result, I would suggest that concepts like the educational savings account or tax credits be used to make sure that everything is evenly and equitably applied throughout the state as far as state funds are concerned. Parental choice puts the power of education in the hands of the parents rather than in the hands of the Department of Public Instruction or special interests. So that is the position I have, is that parental choice should be universal and equitable throughout the state.
Thank you, Jim Scott. Sandra Hett, what is your opinion of the voucher system?
Well, it'd be wonderful if the state of Wisconsin could afford subsidizing three types or levels of education, but unfortunately, they can't. The vouchers program was originally just in Racine in Milwaukee, and the governor wanted to expand it to Appleton, Green Bay, and Madison because of failing districts there and failing schools. And at the blink of an eye, the legislator in a compromise in the budget bill said, "Oh, we're going to expand it statewide, and we're going to put limits on it, 500 the first year, 1,000 the second year," and who knows what's going to happen after that. In actuality, the private schools are now contracted public schools, and I give them a caveat because things that come from the state come with strings, and the state can change their mind and change the rules in midstream. So just be very careful when it comes to our quote-unquote "public" money. We found that voucher schools in the Milwaukee area and others are no more successful when it comes to academic excellence. There is no difference between the voucher school students and the public school students. Michael Ford, a professor from UW-Oshkosh, was a very big proponent of voucher schools. He's now not doing that, and he's speaking on that, saying that there is not a big difference between public and private schools or voucher schools when it comes to student achievements. So with that, I guess that's all.
Thank you, Sandra Hett. John Krings, what is your opinion of voucher schools?
I think the initial intention of the voucher school program was good. It addressed failing schools in urban areas. But with the statewide initiative now, nearly four-fifths of the more than 500 students that received taxpayer-funded subsidies to attend private schools through the new statewide voucher initiative were not previously public school students. So what it's doing is taking tax dollars from the public schools and directing them to private schools. Private schools are not subject to the same rules and regulations as the public schools are. They don't have to hold open meetings. They don't have to have open records requests directed toward them. In other words, whatever private school does, they do of their own free will, which is fine. It's private education. But when the tax dollars are going there, it creates a slippery slope, and the expansion of the voucher program, I do not agree with. I think public schools are, in our community, we do well. If you choose to send your child to a private school, that's your personal choice, and I don't feel that tax dollars should be directed in that way. Thank you.
Thank you, John Krings. Next question, and we start with you, Sandra Hett. Where do you stand in the Common Core standards?
I'm for the standards right now. There's a lot of myths about the standards. They were not dictated by the federal government. They were put together, first of all, 1998, Wisconsin started their own Wisconsin state standards, and they found after a while that they weren't rigorous enough. So in 2006, Tony Evers, they started to make our own Wisconsin standards, and they worked on those with educators in our state for about three years. And then there was this national effort to get a Common Core state standards statewide. And Tony Evers decided, instead of continuing to work on our own, he joined that effort. So there was a great deal of input from the state of Wisconsin when it came to developing the Common Core state standards, and they are just benchmarks. They're saying at this grade level, the child, the student, should be able to do this, and they're benchmarked at each grade level. Common Core is not a curriculum. The teachers, the district, choose their own materials. The teachers decide how they're going to teach. It is just benchmarks. We've been told that Massachusetts has wonderful Common Core state standards and that we should adopt those per se. Even those from Massachusetts say, "No, no, develop your own." So looking at the state standards, we even haven't even had a chance to see if they're successful because there has been no testing with them yet, but I think it's something that needs to be reviewed in the future.
Thank you, Sandra Hett. John Krings, where do you stand in the Common Core standards?
I would echo Sandy's comments, and I would also like to add, currently all but five states have fully implemented the standards. I like the fact that there's consistency. If a family moves from one school district to another school district, from one state to another state, the student entering the schoolhouse will be about in the same place. It really does dictate at what point in the educational process certain things are taught. It does not allow federal government to dictate what curriculum is going to be. And I think it also shows what government can do as far as unfunded mandates. We get told that we need to do a certain thing. So we take our staff, we train our staff, we spend the money to implement a program, and then at the whim of the legislature, we hear that they're thinking about changing it. So all the time and money that we've spent getting up to speed on this now is at risk. So I am a believer in the Common Core state standards.
Thank you, John Krings. Jim Scott, where do you stand in the Common Core standards?
I oppose the Common Core state standards. I'm going to just go to an anecdote here. Stay with me on this. Start with June 2, 2010. That is the day that Common Core state standards became law, or whatever you want to call it. That was the day it was enacted, it was implemented. That is the day that Tony Evers signed up the state of Wisconsin for Common Core, June 2, 2010. Let's backtrack to January 2010. In January 2010 is the very first time that the words "Common Core state standards" occurred at the Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools School Board in any form. It was part of the memorandum of understanding for the Race to the Top Grant application. And that meeting, January of 2010, lasted 12 minutes. The application amount was $499,000. From the time the gavel opened up to the time the gavel came down, it was 12 minutes, $499,000. The four words "Common Core state standards" occurred for the very first time. In May of 2010, the second time the Common Core state standards showed up as a provision. That meeting lasted six minutes, $566,000. Both of these memorandums of understanding were denied. However, we have Common Core state standards. Now, the whole thing is that the Common Core state standards were adopted by the school board before they existed. Now, how can you do that? And I rest my case.
Thank you, Jim Scott. Next question, and we'll start with you, John Krings. Teacher morale has dropped significantly since Act 10. How or what would you do to alleviate this situation?
Unfortunately, that's true. In the meetings that we've had with leadership of the staff, it is difficult. We try to express to them the feelings that we have about the work that they do with our students. Unfortunately, sometimes I think the words aren't, they might not ring true. We do what we can. As board members, we have to make difficult decisions. We have to play by the rules that are given to us by Madison, and those rules change at the whim of the government. So when the rules are given to us, we do the best we can with them. Budgetary, we have only so many dollars to spend. We've been very fortunate that we have been able to not cut programs that may be coming in the future, but this is the world we live in today. And I have directed the staff, when I have talked with them, you know, people say, "Jeez, I wear my name tag out in public," and I feel a little embarrassed. And I said, "You should be proud. You're teaching tomorrow's youth, tomorrow's leaders. These children come to the schoolhouse with many challenges. You take every single child that comes into your classroom, and you do the best job you can to educate them, and to that, they should be commended." So I would say, my own personal opinion, that the people that work in public education are the best people in the world.
Thank you, John Krings. Jim Scott, teacher morale has dropped significantly since Act 10. How or what would you do to alleviate this situation?
The Act 10 results, as far as morale is concerned with teachers, is a tough thing to have to do because you've got the school system trying to do the best they can. And I think what you have to do is you have to try to get the teachers to self-actualize, and you do that by trying to make sure that the teachers are given every opportunity and every tool to work with to have proper academic freedom in the classroom. A lot of the spinoffs of Common Core, for example, take away and restrict some of the imagination and academic freedom that teachers have in the classroom. And I think that Act 10 may not be the direct cause of morale lowering, but I think that what you've got to do is you've got to give the teachers a reason to achieve in the classroom.
Thank you, Jim Scott. Sandra Hett, teacher morale has dropped since Act 10. How or what would you do to alleviate that situation?
I think what we can do, and we do do it, is just listen to their concerns. Sometimes there's nothing we can do about those concerns except listen to them. I just have to reply to the Wisconsin Rapids adoption of the Common Core. That short meeting might have been just to sign the memorandum of understanding, but we had meetings in July 10 of the Educational Services Committee, and on July 12 of the Board, November 10 of the Board, and the Educational Services, December 5 and 12 of 2011, both the committee and the Board, these were all discussions concerning Common Core. And all those meetings, there were actually more than that, I won't read them all, but they all were open to the public. The public had a chance at that time to voice concerns concerning Common Core. It wasn't nothing that we did, you know, in a short meeting behind closed doors. We were very open with this. And I think the teachers have worked very hard to adapt the curriculum to the skills that the kids need at each grade level. They've spent a great deal of time doing this in math and language arts, and I think we have to respect that work that they've put into it. To say we're just going to do away with it, I think that's foolish. I've actually got the documents, you know, it's outlining everything, and they can be creative in their teaching. Common Core does not stop creativity.
Thank you, Sandra Hett. We'll start with you, Jim Scott, on the next question. In times of budget shortfalls, how would you prioritize what gets supported with funding and what would get cut?
The last couple of years, the public school systems have been very, very challenged because the amount of money coming out of Madison has dwindled, has gone down. The equalization amounts have gone down, and the strains upon the taxpayers, the tax base in the community, has also affected the amount of money that we have. As far as what priorities I would place, I think that, first of all, the priorities have to be to benefit the students, whatever it takes to benefit the students. We are in a situation where there's been a drop in enrollment over the last four or five years, a continuing erosion of student population, and as a result, it puts a strain on what schools we have to keep open. But at the same time, we have to try to maximize the efficiency of our resources, whether it's human resources or physical resources. And so what you have to do is you have to strike a balance between those components of the whole system and the needs of the students, but the needs of the students have to come first.
Thank you, Jim Scott. Sandra Hett, in times of budget shortfalls, how would you prioritize what gets supported with funding and what would get cut?
I've said this many times in the past, we've always thought of this as an onion, and the students are at the middle of that onion, and we've done everything we've can to protect the middle of that onion, and we've taken all the things on the outside. We've done things, for example, there were some school closures, nobody likes to do that. We did a reconfiguration, that we took our sixth grades out of the elementary, and we made them into a middle school, a sixth and seventh grade center, and that's become very successful. And then we have our junior high, our eighth and ninth grade. We've done things like redesigning courses. Courses that weren't flying because they didn't have enough numbers were redesigned by the faculty in that department so that it could still be available to the students. What other things? I can't, I'm blank right now. We've done things, for example, to save money, we've looked at insurance, we've changed insurance companies a couple of times in the last couple of years. We've looked at changing different benefits, keeping it much as we can, but we've had to look at changing benefits, having higher deductibles, higher coal pays for our people. We've done things like, we're saving from retirees. Sometimes with the retirees, they're not replaced, but when they are replaced, they're replaced with someone that's just coming in to the educational system so that they're at a lesser cost. We're actually looking at, there's a committee looking at restructuring. You know, is there a point in time in the near future that our ninth graders are going to be at Lincoln? And then once again, we could be going through a large restructuring, but we always want to try to keep the curriculum, the offerings as much as we can for our students.
Thank you, Sandra Hett. John Krings, in times of budget shortfalls, how would you prioritize what gets supported with funding and what gets cut?
I think we always have to remember, education is a people business. Students need teachers in front of them. So a great portion of our dollars go towards staff and their benefits. As Sandy said, we have worked with insurance carriers, we've changed carriers, we've changed coverages. We're in the process right now of proposing more changes going forward. Those are real dollars we can save. It does have an impact on staff, it is more money out of their pocket, but we've been able to keep our programs in place. We've been able to offer multiple advanced placement classes for our high school students. I personally feel that our students leave our schools very ready to face the world that they go out into. So I guess going forward, we've asked staff to take minimal or no raises. As a board, we donated money back every month to the funds, just we thought it was the right thing to do. This is the world we live in today, I guess. We just have to continue to do more with less, but hopefully, we won't have to cut into the programming that we offer for students.
Thank you, John Krings. We'll go to the next question, and we start with you, Sandra Hett. Would you be for or against term limits for school board members?
The voters decide that, you know? If they don't like what you're doing, they're not going to vote you back into office, and that is a term limit. They decide that. If you're doing a good job, you know, why limit the number of years you can be on a board? That's the voters. They have the determination of the term limits.
Thank you, Sandra Hett. John Krings, would you be for or against term limits for school board members?
Well, as Sandy said, the voters decide. When I was first selected to fill an open spot on the board, it took me at least a year to figure out exactly what my responsibilities were. All the terminologies were different. I don't come from a background in education. I work in manufacturing. So you almost need to cheat you what all the acronyms are to even understand some of the things that you're talking about. So in theory, I think term limits are good if you have a pool of dedicated, willing people coming forward to accept these responsibilities. It is a rather thankless position, and we don't have people pounding down the doors coming to our meetings that are interested in serving, so I would have to agree that voters decide your term limits.
Thank you, John Krings. Jim Scott, would you be for or against term limits for school board members?
Well, I'm going to put a little twist on this. First of all, I think the voters will determine who's going to be running the show. However, the twist is, I think that we ought to have school board elections in the fall rather than in the spring. I think that by having the school board elections in the spring during what we would call a low-turnout election, that blocks of votes can swing the way results occur. I would propose that we should take the school board elections and move them to the fall so that a larger turnout of electorate can determine who is going to sit on a school board, and it will also mitigate the block votes of special interests that can occur in a spring election where you have a low turnout.
Thank you, Jim Scott. We'll go to the next question, and we start with you, John Krings. If elected, what would you change about the Wisconsin Rapids Public School System?
Well, I know I have a wish. As a parent of a grade school student, my wife and I are very involved with the parents' groups at her school as well as when our son was at the junior high. My wish would be that parents would be more involved in their children's education. We have an interesting community we live in, we have quite the melting pot here, and sometimes kids come to school unprepared. They may not have had a good night's sleep, they may not have had a good breakfast. The best educators in the world are parents. We decide what happens with our children. So what I would change in my perfect world is that parents would be more involved in the education of their children. I guess from a board member's perspective, I would like to find a way that we could somehow get back towards collective bargaining. I think we had a better communication avenue with staff when we had collective bargaining because now we really have no way of sitting down and talking with people about their jobs and their concerns.
Thank you, John Krings. Jim Scott, if elected, what would you change about the Wisconsin Rapids Public School System?
First, if only one person got elected in my case, I don't know that I could do anything specifically to change anything. I would probably end up being the conscience of the school board in its current state. However, if I was in an ideal world where I could wave a magic wand, there are a couple of things I would do. First off, I think I would go to a year-round school year. I want to try to eliminate the gap, the education gap, and I think that we've got to have the kids go to school year-round in order to make them competitive in today's world where we have to compete against the kids in Shanghai, the kids in Helsinki, the kids in New Delhi. The second thing I would probably do is I would implement parental choice on a universal basis. I want to see the parents take control of their children's education. I want to see the parents take control of their children's education, not the DPI. I don't want the DPI waving the equalization hatchet over our head anymore. I want the parents to be able to choose where and how their children are educated. Another thing is, I think that we ought to implement a concept called remedial training in which the school districts have to take ownership for deficiencies in their graduates. If a graduate goes to an employer, and the employer has to remedially train them in literacy or in math, they should be able to charge back the school district for the cost of that remedial training. The same thing if they go to a college. The college ought to be able to charge back the school district for students that are not capable of reading or math when they go to college.
Thank you, Jim Scott. Sandra Hutt, if elected, what would you change about the Wisconsin Rapids School District?
I'd love to take magic wand and just say that there was no more rising poverty in our school system. It's not an excuse, but it's a harsh reality that we have about 45% of our student population get free and reduced lunch. This is up substantially. We have one elementary school that is at 77%. This has a detrimental effect on these children trying to learn on a daily basis. I think for community, I'd like teachers to be respected more. They always seem to be bashed from one side or the other. And same for administration. It seems that some people in the community thinks teachers, school board, and administration should be at each other all the time, but we must work together to provide the best education for our students. And I think I'd like some of the people in the community to understand that. I think we have a great educational system here.
Thank you, Sandra Hutt. We'll start with you, Jim Scott, on the next question. Do you think Wisconsin Rapids Public School Teachers should have a residency requirement for administrators? I'm sorry, I misstated this. Do you think WRPS should have a residency require for, residency requirement for administrators and teachers?
I think, I think that it would be nice to have teachers reside within the school district, but I don't think it's essential. What might be more essential is that the teachers have some sort of a limitation in terms of physical distance for the commute.
Thank you, Jim Scott. Sandra Hutt.
I think I agree with you. It would be great if they could live here in the community, but if they don't, we could be missing out on some great teachers that are teaching in our school system that live outside of the community, that may live in Point or some even live in Wausau. So, and it's something that the state's looking for, you know? They were doing away with the residency requirement in Milwaukee for Milwaukee workers. So I don't think it's something that's going to, you know, come here to Wisconsin Rapids, and I don't think I'd like to see that.
Thank you, Sandra Hutt. John Krings.
I think we all are in agreement on this issue. I don't want to tell someone where they have to live. We've got good people working here, and wherever they choose to live is their business.
Thank you, John Krings. Sandra, we'll start with you on the next question. Are you committed to our charter schools? Would you renew their charters?
Yes, I am committed to our charter schools, as long as they maintain instrumentality of the district. That means that they're district charter schools. We just had two charters that came up for renewal. I voted to renew both of them. There's a hesitancy because the state may be looking at them and saying, oh, we're going to change the rules in the middle of the game, and even though you have a charter school that is under the district, that it's an instrumentality of the district, we're going to make it so that they don't have to be that. And I don't agree with that. That was some of the hesitation, I think, on some of the districts this time when those two came up. So one charter was renewed, and that was because they got some dissemination grants, money from the state that said, you're doing such a great job that you're going to have people from other districts come here and you're going to share your information with them.
Thank you, Sandra Hutt. John Krings.
I am very much supportive of our charter schools. Charter schools really by design are the research and development of education. We've had multiple charter schools in our district, some that have been renewed, and some that are no longer even called charter schools. We have River Cities High School, we have the Central Cities Health Institute, at Lincoln High School, those started as charter schools, they're no longer referred to as charters. Vesper is no longer referred to as a charter, but they're still educating in the same manner that they developed. So, yes, I am, and I would echo Sandy's statements about the instrumentality. One thing we do need to maintain is that all of our elementary schools are treated in the same manner financially, so the charter schools cannot have things any better or any worse than any of the elementaries that are not charters.
Thank you, John. Jim Scott, are you committed to our charter schools, and would you renew their charters?
Yes. Now, the way I look at charter schools is charter schools are a step. They are a step towards universal parental choice in that they are, they are kind of like an R and D facility for education. Charter schools are allowed to be incubators of ideas and methods and strategies and disciplines that may not work well in a normal educational environment. The school out in Rudolph has a much higher performance rating than some of the other schools in the district, mainly because they do have the ability to try new ideas, new techniques that can't be used in a traditional classroom environment in a normal school. But I think that charters is a step towards universal parental choice in that parents should be able to choose to go to Rudolph, for instance. If you have a school or a student that wants to go to Rudolph, let them go to Rudolph. Don't force them to have to go to a school in the neighborhood. And if the parents can take the money that would be dedicated to that particular student and take it to Rudolph and let them pay for it, that will give the parents the choice to go to that school to make sure that that student can avail themselves of the best performance in the district.
Thank you, Jim Scott. John, we'll start with you on the next question. What can the school board do to attract talented new teachers?
Well, I think we need to treat our help fairly. Any business or organization is only as good as the people. And I think we have an excellent administrative team. I think we're very lean when it comes to administrators. We ask an awful lot of them, and they do above and beyond what they're asked. I think our teaching staff is second to none. We have many recognized educators in this district, both at the state and national level. They do an excellent job. Our custodial staff, our food service, our support people, everyone, if I forget anybody, I apologize, they all pull on the same end of the rope. They understand that this district values them, that this district values education, and I think if we keep doing what we have been doing, we will continue to attract good help.
Thank you, John Krings. Jim Scott, what can the school board do to attract talented new teachers?
I think the school board has to create an environment that is conducive to academic freedom in the classroom. Teachers are part of a people business. The whole educational system is a people business, is a relationship between the student and the teacher. And so we have to do whatever we can to allow the teacher to self-actualize in that classroom and their relationship with the student. And this is academic freedom. And all the other extraneous things will take care of themselves. So I think that what we have to do is we have to give the teacher the opportunity to expand themselves to a point where they achieve all of the objectives that they emotionally, mentally, spiritually, and intellectually can achieve in a classroom in a relationship and conveying knowledge to the student.
Thank you, Jim Scott. Sandra Hutt, what can the school board do to attract talented new teachers?
I think by attracting talented teachers, demonstrate that we have a district that values education. I think our public values in education, our educational system, for example, in the last couple of referendum that they passed, I mean, that was a wonderful plus for their concern and love of education in Wisconsin Rapids. I just think, you know, just value the teachers we have. Right now, I think you're going to see a shortage of teachers. For example, there's been a 50% drop in students that are in the UW Stevens Point Educational Program. And we have teachers after five years that are dropping out of education. I think part of it is a lot of mandates that come down from the state. You know, these are things that, RTI, Response to Intervention, things like this. These are things that are beyond the control of the local school board, these are the things that the state says, but we can support our teachers in what they need to do.
Thank you, Sandra Hutt. Jim Scott, we'll start with you on this next question. Briefly describe what you feel the relationship should be between the school board and the
The superintendent is an employee of the district. The school board answers to the stakeholders of the district, the voters, the parents, the taxpayers. And I think that there is a system of checks and balances there. The responsibility of the superintendent is to lead, but they have to lead through verification. The verification comes through the limitations of the school board on the administrator. And I think that the relationship has got to be one that's amenable, but also has to be open-minded. You have to be able to say no as well as yes. You can't be a rubber stamp or a lapdog for the administration. You have to use your own mind, you have to think independently, but you have to be able to be a team player at the same time because the objectives are all the same. But I think there's a basic tension or, I got you, tension in the relationship between the board and the superintendent. If you don't have that tension, things won't necessarily get done to the best interest of the students, the taxpayers, and the voters.
Thank you, Jim Scott. Sandra Hutt, briefly describe what you feel the relationship should be between the school board and the superintendent.
I think there needs to be mutual respect and trust between the superintendent and the school board. Lots of times, a school board is accused of rubber stamping or being a lapdog. The superintendent will come to us and say, this is a direction we're talking about going to solve this problem. Do you think we're on the right track? Yes or no? And we can say yes or no, or give more directions. And when it finally comes before the board for a vote, this has been something that the superintendent has been given directions on. The superintendent is not going to be bringing something before the board that we put a great deal of work in to have the board say, eh, no, that was dumb. So direction is given, and when it finally comes to a vote, it's had a lot of input from the board, from teachers, from administration. They don't, you know, like I said, they just don't bring stuff before the board that they know the board isn't going to be in step with. That would be foolish, a waste of valuable time. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra Hutt. John Krings, briefly describe what you feel the relationship should be between the school board and the superintendent.
Well, as Jim said, the superintendent is an employee, but they are the educational leader of the district. When you look at our board now as it's currently constructed, we have a very diverse background. We bring many different talents and experiences to the table, but speaking for myself, I'm not an educator. So I look to the superintendent as someone who is our educational leader. She does answer to us. We chose the superintendent after much deliberation and many interviews and open forums. I think we've got an excellent superintendent in our district. I think we've got a good relationship, but there are checks and balances. Ultimately, the buck stops with us.
Thank you, John Krings. We will move to our final question. Sandra Hutt, you will begin. What is your vision for public education in Wisconsin for the next five to 10 years?
I hope that we have a strong public educational system in Wisconsin Rapids, I mean, in Wisconsin and Wisconsin Rapids. I have a great fear because right now, we're looking at having a dual educational system that won't be, neither one will be supported fully by the state of Wisconsin. I think this is one of the big things that Wisconsin had going for it, was our educational system was a great draw for people to come to Wisconsin. And I think our educational system in Wisconsin Rapids is a great draw to bring businesses here. I can't imagine businesses wanting to go somewhere where the educational system isn't good, and I think we have that here. You know, any community, the backbone of that community is their public schools. If you start looking at closing a school, there's just a huge uproar because they realize how important their public school is to the well-being of their community. And I think we have to, you know, hopefully go slowly if this voucher is going to continue with the makeup that we have in the legislature in Madison. I have fears, I feared greatly for the public educational system, but we'll hope for the best.
Thank you, Sandra Hutt. John Krings, what is your vision for public education in Wisconsin for the next five to 10 years?
Well, if I didn't believe in public education, I wouldn't be sitting up here tonight. I believe in our schools. I think that they do an excellent job educating our youth. I know my children have all had an excellent education in this district, and I look forward for my granddaughter to also have those opportunities when she gets older. I think the world is changing, as it always has been, and technology is a huge part of what we do. Our schools may not look the same 10, 15, 20 years down the road. I think that virtual education is going to continue to grow. I think students will be able to have access to more endeavors, programs based on technology, where they'll be in a classroom where maybe there's a teacher in China that's teaching a class, that there's students throughout the world that are receiving that education. So I see public education continuing to grow into the future.
Thank you, John Krings. Jim Scott, what is your vision for public education in Wisconsin for the next five to 10 years?
Well, I'm hoping that through the embracing of universal parental choice, that the public school system will be in the hands of the parents rather than in the hands of the DPI, and that as a result, all kids, all parents, will be able to choose how and where they can be educated. I think that the role of the brick and mortar schools is going to decline somewhat as more choices are available for how to get educated. I think that technology is going to become much more dominant in the education of our children, and the parents should be able to use technology to choose how their child is educated, whether it's online or at home, in home education, or in public schools. Now, the problem we have with the public part is that public schools have morphed into government schools, and I think what we have to do is we have to go back to being public schools again. And the best way for that to happen is to give the parents the control over their child's
Thank you, Jim Scott. We will now move to concluding remarks. We start with you, Mr. Scott.
First, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for allowing me to be here tonight. I think it was a very productive and energized discussion. The other thing I want to do is I want to thank all the supporters that have been behind me in my endeavor to try to be on the school board. One of the things that I'd like to talk about is technique as far as the voting is concerned. And that is that all the folks out there think that they have to vote for two people. You don't have to vote for two people. You can vote for one person if you want to. Now, you can vote for up to two people on Tuesday, but what I'm asking of the voters is to vote for one and be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim Scott. Sandra Hutt. Sandra Head.
Well, I'd like to thank the League, and I'd like to thank the people that stuck around for the third session of questions, and for those that are listening at home in their nice, comfortable chairs. I can't imagine why somebody wants to run, to be on the Board of Education of a public school, and they don't believe in public education. I take some things from an article that was written by Mr. Scott, and it was printed on the 23rd of August in 2013. He said, Tony Evers being in charge of voucher schools is like the fox guarding the hen house. I say, somebody that's on a school board, a public school board, that doesn't believe in public education is like a fox guarding the hen house. The state budget in 2015, he says, if it lifts the cap on state, it should lift the cap on statewide parental choice. Public schools would have to become more efficient if we privatized more. The privatization of public schools would save parents and taxpayers enormous sums of money. There would be no need for administrators, school boards, or CISA. No need for administrators. We have a about mid-sixty-five million dollar budget, we need administrators, we need a superintendent, we need a business agent to oversee that money, we need somebody in charge at Human Resources, we need principals, we're administrators in our buildings, we need a curriculum director to direct the curriculum in the district. There would be no administrator in special education. I don't understand why you would want to be on the Board of Education of a public school if you don't believe in public education, and I strongly believe in public education, and I stand up for public education.
Thank you, Sandra Head. John Krings.
In closing, I would like to again thank the League for hosting tonight's forum. I believe that a child's education is the foundation upon which their future success rests. The Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools accept all students who come to the doors regardless of any challenges they bring with them. We are a very diverse community, both socially and economically. Our students are offered many different programs of study to satisfy their varied educational interests, whether it be handing a proud graduate their hard-earned diploma, or reading to a class of kindergarteners, the job of a school board member carries great reward and satisfaction. I'm very proud of my seven years of service to the Board of Education and eagerly look forward to the next three years of service. That is why I'm asking for your vote on April 1st. I would like to leave with a quote by Franklin D. Roosevelt that sums up my feelings about education. He wrote, "Democracy cannot succeed unless those who express their choice are prepared to choose wisely. The real safeguard of democracy, therefore, is education." Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks to all of you, Sandra Head, John Krings, Jim Scott, for being willing to run for public office. Thanks to River Cities Community Access for the live television coverage of tonight's forum, and to WFHR 1320 on your AM dial for the simulcast. We also want to thank all of the League volunteers who were here tonight to help out, help put together this forum. Again, thank you, and a reminder to all of our voters, be sure to get out and vote next Tuesday, April 1st. Good night.